of the Johnson City Board of Education to order and welcome everybody that's here. Thank you for being here. We always start our meetings with a moment of silence if you'll join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Dr. Burnett, are you leading? Oh, we have students leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Yay. Tonight, we have Elizabeth Keller, McKenna Latham, and Zoe Wassenger representing Southside and leading us in the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to point out that the artwork in the back of the room is from Southside Elementary. And now the principal, Katie Jones, will give us an update.
Thank you. These ladies are our fourth grade members of our new after-school club called the Junior Journalists. This club for our school was created from an idea from one of our students, Elizabeth. Last year, she wrote a letter, I actually found it, she was excited, with an idea and specific details on how we could start a school newspaper. I will quote her letter. Obviously, we do not have to do this. I just thought it would be fun. And she was exactly right. Our second through fourth grade students applied to join the sought-after team and were accepted by official letter to join the new crew each nine weeks under the leadership of Dr. Hawley. We currently have Animation Lab, Girls on the Run, Boys on Bikes, Jump Start Tutoring, and now Junior Journalists to make up our after-school opportunities. These ladies wrote their own speech to share with you a few things they are working on this quarter.
At Southside, we started a club called Junior Journalist. We meet every Monday after school until 5:00 p.m. Our amazing librarian, Dr. Hawley, is our sponsor. The club has 10 students from second, third, and fourth grades. A different group of students work each nine weeks. We are trying to publish two to three newspaper editions every nine weeks. We'll use Smore to share the newspaper digitally. We will also use Canva to create a hard copy to go home with students. Some interviews will be recorded and played during our daily news program, WSSS. Each edition of our newspaper will include interviews, spotlight articles on new teachers, support staff, and special teachers, events in our school, student-created cartoons, book reviews, a joke section, and a word game, such as a word search or a crossword puzzle. Currently, we are working on an interview of our Tennessee Teacher of the Year, Ms. Rankin, and Ms. Cook, who was chosen as the WJHL Teacher of the Week. Our spotlight articles are on Ms. Ariel, one of our custodians, Coach Scott, our P.E. teacher, and Ms. Robinette, who is a new teacher this year. Some journalists are writing articles on the hope totes we received in the Food City backpacks that were given to our students before fall break. We are also working on an article entitled Pumpkin Picks and Halloween Tricks. Cartoonists are busy drawing, and we are surveying the students to find their favorite candy and what they did for fall break. Our first edition of Inside Southside should be published in the next few weeks. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
First of all, any questions for our Junior Journalists? First of all, that was a very well-written speech, so good job. But I just want to know, what is the thing that you've learned that was the most surprising to you that you didn't think you would learn?
Um, well, we are just writing a whole bunch of different things about our school and what's going on, so all the students get to know what's happening. And we're excited to learn that the whole school gets a copy and that we all get to figure out what's happening with every grade and the whole school.
That's great. I have a quick question. Again, that was such a fabulous presentation. Thank you. So I don't get to go to Southside. I'm a little too old. How can I get a copy of your journal, your journal that you're making? I'll pay for it if I need to.
We'll smore it to you.
Smore it to me? That's great. Would you, would you send it to all of us? We would like to read it.
Absolutely.
Is that it? Thank you so much.
It's hard to follow that. Thank you, ladies. They did an amazing job. Thank you, Dr. Burnett, for giving me the opportunity to lead Southside into the school board for your continued support. I'm honored to lead our community school full of fabulous students, families, faculty, and staff. I'm also always excited to brag on our school. We have a lot to celebrate this school year. We are thrilled that our very own Morgan Rankin was selected as the Tennessee Teacher of the Year. This is an amazing accomplishment and well-deserved. Southside was recently recognized as a reward school for achievement last year for reading and math. This year, we will continue to focus on increasing reading achievement through a variety of avenues. Each week, we celebrate student reading progress to their goals at our virtual assemblies. This year, our students are blasting off with reading and are challenged to become flight-certified and travel to each planet based on books they've read using AR as well as Read Everyday folders. Students earn brag tags with their flight certification and planets to represent their reading success, and their picture is proudly displayed in the hallway on each planet thanks to Dr. Johnny C. Hawley. We recently showcased students and family-created storybook character pumpkins in the library and during our Halloween sing-along Family Night last week. We were excited about that. Now, we're gearing up for our fall season of the Battle of the Books, and our students also participate in March Book Madness every year. Thank you for giving us literacy coaches that work and support our teachers and students. Our own Shelley Burton, Dr. Burton, is a literacy coach. However, she continues to work with our literacy team each month and assists our students to build their classroom libraries. Our PTA is also very supportive of our reading goals and works with teachers to provide classroom grants for materials. Last year, our PTA had their first annual Read-a-thon fundraiser, and it raised over $11,000 for our school. So we're planning another Read-a-thon for the spring. Southside continues to work hard to create problem solvers and increase achievement in math. Thank you for the high-quality math coaches we have in our district that support our teachers and students. This year, we look forward to working with Greg Tang and his team to help us with math support. With a focus on reading and math, Southside served 102 students in our summer learning camp this past summer, and we currently have 83 students enrolled in our after-school tutoring program in grades kindergarten through fourth grade. Thank you, Dr. Wallace and Eldana with Johnson City Transit for providing the late bus after-school. That's new for us this year. We have many students that wouldn't be able to stay after tutoring without that. So you may have heard recently about our Tree Street State Certified Arboretum, we had a couple of school board members there, that officially opened last week on Thursday. Jeff Keeling worked closely with the Tree Streets Neighborhood Organization and our City of Johnson City to make this dream a reality with 80 species of trees that will provide an abundant of learning opportunities for our students. Dr. Nancy Miles is here. She's our school liaison for this project, and she recently wrote a STEM grant, a STEM grant, for STEM backpacks filled with materials, including a GoPro camera for students to explore our environment. We are thrilled to be finished with construction, and our new wing looks incredible. We're planning a day for you to come visit, to see our finished spaces. Thank you, Randy Trivett, Joe Barnes, and our entire maintenance staff. I know you miss me, but thanks with all those broken eggs. He probably doesn't. The last pieces of our furniture arrived last week. So we are currently using two of those four spaces right now, and couldn't imagine our life without that new staircase. Can't wait for you to check that out. Southside is growing. This year, we hired a new kindergarten teacher, and they're going to interview Ms. Robinette, our new first-grade teacher, as well. Thank you for providing SROs, School Resource Officers, school nurses, frontier health therapists, and care managers for all schools. These members of our staff are invaluable to ensure that all of our students and staff are healthy, safe, and supported. We have a new school nurse this year. She's incredible. She works closely with our families, and just being able to COVID test at school and have that quick turnaround with results has really been a game-changer this year. So thank you to that, to them, and Jennifer Norton for that. Our mental health team is all brand-new this year, and they've done an incredible job getting to know our students and families while providing much-needed support. You probably noticed us in the commercial. I don't know about you, but my family said, "We just saw you in a commercial." That was us, and that was thanks to our new counselor, Lisa King. She worked closely with Coke, Consolidated, Samaritans, Feet, and Food City to provide all of our 350 students new shoes, a hygiene kit, notes of hope, and a free backpack full of food. So just thinking of all those shoe sizes was a monumental task. Welcome to Southside. We're glad to have you here. But she's also been working with our students a lot this year with celebrating their identities and valuing all individuals by spending some time figuring out what makes them unique. So I wanted her to briefly share about these posters that you see hanging around because she brought these over for us.
Hi, I'm Lisa King. I'm the new school counselor, like Ms. Jones just said, and I just want to briefly just share some of the growth and the work that our students have done at Southside regarding diversity, inclusion, acceptance, and just understanding the concept of celebrating our similarities and also celebrating our differences. So we've been doing this by exploring a lot of books and having a lot of conversations around different cultural, ethnic, and demographical differences that we may have. And really, the root of this work, we have to know who we are as people. So we have been talking about what is our identity, how it is like a puzzle, and there's lots of different pieces that put together who we are. So we have been talking about our names, if they have meaning, where our family comes from. We've been talking about ethnicity, what races, our personality, the language that we speak at school, the language that we speak at home. And the kids have shared so much about who they are, and we've also talked a lot about how to respond. So how to respond when someone's very different than you, and they're sharing something that maybe you've never heard of before, you've never seen before, how to respond with respect, how to follow up with questions. And so I just want to end with a couple of things that our students have shared during this unit. I asked them, "What are two parts of your identity that are especially important to you?" And these are some of the things they said. "My culture and my eyes, my Latin roots, my personality. I don't have a middle name. I am dyslexic. My family and I value being strong in our mind and body. My favorite part of my appearance is my skin. It is brown. I am proud that I am different and unique. I speak Spanish and English." So we have had so many amazing conversations around inclusion and diversity, and we brought these posters, so I hope you get a chance to check those out. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am, as you can tell, proud to be a part of the Southside community and Johnson City Schools. We appreciate your continued support, as well as central office staff, all other schools. Check out our artwork, led by Ms. LeClaire, Monet LeClaire, our artist, our art teacher. And we are currently voting on a school t-shirt that our students have designed. So that is very hard to vote on that, so I'm glad to have student help with that. But thank you for letting us shine tonight and for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, students. I see that commercial all the time. I think one of our journalists is in that commercial, too. Next on our agenda is recognitions.
I'm glad to be here. Good evening. We have three recognitions for this evening. We want to begin by recognizing Ms. Karen Bunch. She's a teacher at Town Acres. Karen was recently named Tennessee Science Teachers Association Science Educator of the Year in grades K-4. Congratulations to Karen. If you'd come up, please. Our next recognition is very appropriate for the time, for November. Dr. Barnett recently notified staff at Johnson City Schools we'd open up the window for the United Way campaign. This next recognition fits in line with that. We'd like to recognize Arushi Raj, a sophomore at Science Hill High School. Arushi recently hosted a book drive for United Way of East Tennessee Highlands. As of this past Friday, approximately 671 books have been donated, as well as $1,150 in cash donations, which will be used to purchase another 150 to 200 books. We want to congratulate Arushi and recognize her for her service to our community. Joining us for this recognition is United Way of East Tennessee Highlands Marketing Director, Sam Lancaster. If you guys could come up, please. And finally, we want to recognize Julia Gilmore, a junior at Science Hill High School. Julia is a longtime fundraiser and advocate for St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. Julia's most recent fundraiser, Project Energizer, raised approximately $15,200 worth of batteries, chargers, gift cards, and cash, so St. Jude Children could have properly functioning toys and devices. Julia has partnered with St. Jude for about eight years. During that time, she's helped raise over $52,000 worth of items and donations for St. Jude. We want to congratulate, recognize Julia for the work she has done and will continue to do, I'm sure.
Keith Turner needs to talk to that girl. Can't raise it down.
Got some amazing things going on in our school system. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Second, please. Okay. All those in favor say yes? Any opposed? We have no one signed up to address the board tonight under Correspondence, Delegations, and Communications, but there are a couple of statements that I want to make before we start our meeting, the rest of our agenda. There's been quite a bit of controversy recently about the National School Boards Association, and I've gotten a couple of comments. I just want to make it clear that over a year ago, the Tennessee School Boards Association started discussing NSBA and chose to withdraw from NSBA. So the Tennessee, none of our boards, nor the Tennessee School Boards Association is any longer a member of NSBA. And we did that for a couple of reasons. We thought there had been some mismanagement of funds, and that NSBA was making some statements that did not represent what we felt was important as values in Tennessee. So we, as a state, withdrew from NSBA. So I just want to make that clear, and that started July 1st. I hear there's been five other states recently that have also withdrawn. And I know everyone's aware that there was a special session of our state legislature over the weekend. It ended very early in the morning on Saturday. We will not necessarily be discussing that tonight. When the governor signs those bills into law, we will change our protocols to make sure that we are consistent with the new state laws. So we'll follow what the governor and our legislators have put forward, but not until that they're actually laws. But that is not on our agenda tonight. All right, we'll move on to reports from the superintendent and staff.
Thank you. The first report tonight is Building Projects Update. Mr. Randy Trivett, thank you for being here.
Thank you all for having me here. I'll get this back just a little bit. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to give you guys a report. I like what I do for the City of Johnson City and for Johnson City Schools. It's exciting. And I also want to thank Ms. Simpson for attending one of our progress meetings. She came out there with contractors and the subs and the architect and participated in one of our progress meetings, and I hope she enjoyed that and had a good time while she was there. But we appreciate your support and your attendance. The first item on the Building Projects Update is the Indian Trail Intermediate School Proposed additions and alterations. That project is 100% completed. The contractor's working on his final billing that I'll probably receive here within the next week or so. They've completed the punch list and all the items that they were going to complete through fall break, and so we're excited to say that project will be done, and that'll be one less progress meeting that I'll have to attend. Southside Elementary School, as Ms. Katie said earlier, is completed. She's got her furnishings. Those rooms are remarkable. You should go by and look at them, the murals on the walls, the way the classrooms are laid out. It turned out wonderful, and I'm glad she's very happy with the end result, and it was a pleasure working with her and Dr. Jacobs as well at Indian Trail.
What we talked about is doing a ribbon cutting and inviting the commission as well, and wanted to make sure they had furniture first. So we thought maybe January, we'll probably be able to do it in December.
Do we need a plaque for that also?
Yes, for that addition. And Indian Trail, a little bit different space, but addition, that's the final addition that can be built at Southside.
That's correct. And it is completed 100%. So the contractor will be sending me their final payout application this week as well. And we were able to manage the construction on Indian Trail and on Southside, just to let you guys know that we were able to watch how we would do contingencies. We didn't run into a lot of unforeseen circumstances. The ones that we did, we did address, and we paid for those out of contingency. But at the last commission meeting, I sent in a change order to reduce the contract amount for Indian Trail by nearly $50,000. So that's how we managed and was able to save the taxpayers' money on that project. And then at Southside, it's on the city commission meeting for this coming Thursday, that we were able to reduce that contract amount by nearly $50,000 as well. So it's good when you can manage a project and you get the end result that you're looking for. You take care of any surprises or anything that needs to be done during the construction, but you're also able to save money and come in under budget. Woodland Elementary School, both classrooms now, both additions, if you drive out by there, you'll see both of them are blocked up. They've got one of them, Edition A that we're calling, or Edition B in the back. It's completely bricked, all the way around, three sides, has the rubber membrane on it. They're installing windows this week. So that, that part of that addition, four classrooms, will be completely dried in within the week. Edition A, which is on the side that you see when you first turn into the parking lot, they're bricking it this week. It'll take them about three weeks to get all the brick completed. They'll start installing windows then, so that one should be completely dried in in about three weeks. They're inside both additions, putting in block filler, putting on the paint, so we're moving along. Most of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing rough ends, excuse me, are about, they're probably over 60% complete in both wings. Building B is a little farther along, so we're on schedule, maybe about a week. It's going to be a tight schedule, but we may be about a week behind schedule of getting everything completed in that December timeframe, so that when the kids move back into school after winter break, that they can go into the new addition. Dr. Reach will have a decision to make of who she wants to put in there in each of those additions, so that we can start then moving around in our phases on the inside and emptying up and freeing up some space to do the HVAC upgrades. That project is going as good as we can. We just increased our progress meetings to every week, just to try to keep the contractor and the subcontractors on task and moving and trying to solve any problems that we may see that might delay the schedule. So we're working on that. Lakewood Elementary School, that project's been started, so they're still doing a lot of grade work. They're digging footers for the addition. They've got the building pad ready to go. They've been putting in a lot of underground utilities, water lines, stormwater. They've got a lot of that in. They're building the retaining wall that holds that back bank up. And so that project's moving along. At our last progress meeting, you know, the contractor assures me that we're still on schedule, how we've got everything mapped out to complete things at certain timelines, so that we can move into the school at the best appropriate times. Town Acres Elementary School, court guard screening. I've talked to the architect about that. He's been issued a PO to do that. He's been issued a PO to do that design work and take it all the way through the bidding process. So, he's working on getting all the specifications, the construction documents ready. Really, I really, really hope that I can bid that out either in November or December so that we can get started and get something up, January, February, March timeframe somewhere in there, to get that screening completed and that courtyard closed in at Town Acres. Science Hill High School Side Slab Renovation. As you know, this is being funded 100% by Esri Money, and the architect's making really good progress, meeting with school staff, the principal, and some of the science staff at the high school. We even had a meeting this past Friday where we discussed schematic design, schematic layout, how the classrooms are going to look, making sure the staff is approving, you know, the design and layout and the function of the classroom so that they'll be able to teach and do that. So, we're looking to see these drawings completed sometime in January, and then it'll take about two or three months to go through all the approval processes with school board and city commission, and then getting the bids out and getting a contractor. So, we're really hoping that we can start construction sometime in the March or April timeframe. And then, that'll help us in that older part of the building where we have to do some hazardous abatement, doing that during the summer while school's out. And then, Mountain View Elementary, I know I keep bringing this up every month to you all, but there is a lot of work that goes into these projects that you can't physically see when there's a lot of planning, a lot of design, a lot of work that has to take place so that when they do put it on paper, it's correct, and we know it'll work, and contractors can do what they design. And so, that's kind of what's going on with Mountain View on the HVAC upgrade. That's more of a complex school, or it's going to be more of a complicated upgrade with HVAC because we can't put anything on the roof like we're doing at some of these other schools. So, we're working on all that design and detail. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate your all's support.
Next report is the financial report ending September 30, 2020. Leah Valley.
21.
What did I say, 20? September 30, 2021. Thank you.
Revenues for September totaled $6,290,000. Sales tax collections decreased slightly in September, but were still 20.86% above the previous year for the year. I've looked at October and November. They look to stay on track. So, I think December, we'll see September sales. That would have been after some of the federal money, and so I think that would be a good benchmark to kind of look and see what we get for December. Total revenues through September were $15,613,000 and were 18.7% above budget. Expenditures for the month of September totaled $6,386,000. And through the month of September, expenditures totaled $15,799,000, and we're down 2.8% from the previous year. And this is savings compared to last year. We did a lot of upfront transfers to the Health Insurance Fund that we've not had to do this year. Fund balance at the end of September was $10,240,000. Fund balance is improved but was still short of the goal by $3,017,000. And currently, the cash account has a balance of $6,369,000. No transfers remain in the months of September or October to the Health Insurance Fund to cover remaining claims. And at the end of September, the Health Insurance Fund had a balance of $253,000. And because we're in a good position, Dr. Barnett and I discussed and kind of looked at, we've had accumulated some funds. We've had previously some budget requests for signs at our schools that don't have the newer sign. So, we're looking, Joe Barnes is looking at that for us to get some estimates what that would cost.
Leah, do you have, how much longer do we have on the payout for health insurance?
September was just three months. We have six months.
Yes, okay.
October, I would say roughly, we've probably done about $60,000 in claims paid out. So, that's why nothing was transferred in October. Unless there's a large claim coming through, I don't look that we'll put any additional funds in, so.
December 31.
September 31, yep.
Any other questions? That's an action item.
Motion to accept the budget as presented.
The financial report.
The report, the financial report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is update on sales tax, PEP. Leah Valley as well.
Sales tax deposits for September consisted of $245,000 for the city and $150,000 for the schools. The monthly interest payment on the 2010 Series bond was issued, bond issue was made, and the account had a balance at the end of September of $6,303,000. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final report is a report of school system, school compliance. Tammy Pierce is here. In case you have any questions, there's a report in your packet. We are in compliance as per state and federal laws and regulations.
Any questions on that report? Is that an action item? Tammy, you need us to vote on that?
No.
Okay.
That's not an action, no. That's all.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to unfinished business. We have nothing on our agenda. Consent agenda, are there any items anyone wishes to pull? Well, five minutes later than our last meeting. Recommendation from the superintendent for action. There is none?
None for this meeting.
Okay. That brings us to new business. Our only piece of new business is any communications follow-up we need from this meeting. I think we'll probably be doing some communicating once those laws are signed into being. So, is there anything else from this meeting we need to communicate?
We will have.
Oh, thank you. The consent agenda. There are no items we wish to pull. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. I don't think there's any follow-up we need from this meeting. That brings us to information items and committee reports. Our wonderful staff is welcome to leave. You're welcome to stay, too.
Thank you all.